I'd like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have three, uh, three study items on our agenda. Item number one is Colorado School of Mines Creekside Park Hill Stabilization Project. The second one is the city plan status update. And the third is the two J sales tax extension effort, project review and update. Am I getting feedback?
Yeah.
Okay, I should be off on all of the things.
I'm gonna show you.
Now it's better. Now it's better?
I think it's better.
Okay.
Yeah. Any feedback from here if you though?
Better, better is good.
Testing.
Yeah. Um, I don't see the sign up to speak in here.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. We will start our meeting as we usually do with comments from our public to come in and talk to council on any item that is on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. And I have one caller joining us online that I'd like to go to now. Kelly Blinn, if you're joining us, would you please unmute and give us your first name and last name? And maybe an address?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name's Kelly Blinn. Um, I'm at four one seven five Brentwood Street. Um, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team. Again, sorry to bombard you for a second week as well. Um, but some really relevant topics tonight. Um, we're really excited to see the two J ballot initiative funding moving forward. Um, we were really supportive and helped out with the two J campaign. And really appreciate the focus of the plans that we're seeing so far in improving multimodal transportation access. Um, we appreciate that the list of projects put forward for discussion tonight relies a lot on engagement and planning that has happened already. Um, we really, you know, appreciate leveraging that. We also feel like probably the scope and design of each of these will need more conversation and should be informed by best practices for bike and pedestrian facilities that support use by all ages and abilities. So we'd love to understand how the ADAS can continue to engage as these projects move forward. Um, and also hope we can dig more in on kind of how these projects might get sequenced over time and which most might be most ripe to leverage other grant funds and, and how we can help out with that. Um, on a few just specific items and have to say, we're kind of still digging into the list because it's exciting with how extensive it is, but had a couple of small comments. Um, we really appreciate the focus on filling the sidewalk gaps that were identified in the Bike Pet Master Plan, um, and particularly the ones we've been focused on through the Safe Roots to Parks Initiative. Um, there's some really important gaps on some of our major corridors like Kipling and Thirty Second that impact residents' abilities to walk to schools or grocery stores. Um, and there's also some really key gaps highlighted on some of our more minor corridors, but that still get a lot of traffic like Pierce and Twenty-Ninth that we also know will make a big difference. We hope we can dig into the details a little more in the months to come, um, as we're still trying to understand kind of which segments and projects have been selected and which maybe haven't been prioritized from the Bike Pet Master Plan, uh, but we think this is a, a great list to start. Um, quickly on the Thirty-Eighth East Refresh Project, um, this is of course the city's kind of main commercial corridor with potential for walkability. Um, and we just want to say we hope that bike and pedestrian access is modernized as a part of this project and also hope that the city might consider extending the project limits to look beyond Harlan, um, and ensure that there are continuous bike facilities all the way to Sheridan, since right now they drop off, uh, east of, of Pierce. Um, and we know that Denver is currently planning their section of West Thirty-Eighth, which seems like a great opportunity to, to connect plans for this corridor. Finally, I'll just say on pavement maintenance, um, hopefully if we're investing in resurfacing, we can consider bike and pedestrian infrastructure as a part of that. Um, we were able to work with the city on getting bike lanes on Harlan Street when that got resurfaced recently, and this can be a really cost-effective way to, to incorporate these facilities, uh, at the time of restriping and resurfacing. That's all we have for now. Uh, we haven't had a lot of chance to review super thoroughly, but just wanted to say a few words of, uh, support, um, and, and feedback and are excited to keep engaging as this moves along. So thank you.
Thank you. We have one speaker signed up to speak in the hall, Katie Zobal, I believe. I hope that's the right pronunciation, but please, uh, come to the podium and introduce yourself so we'll get your name sounding right on the, um, on the audio and you'll have, uh, three minutes to talk to council.
Great. Um, hi, I'm Katie Dayback.
Dayback, okay.
Um, and I live at forty-three ten Garland Street in District Four, and my kids attend Stevens Elementary, so I'm here to talk, um, on behalf of our school accountability committee. I wanted to just come, um, and say thank you so much to, um, to the city and to our great city staff for, um, being responsive to some of the concerns that the Stevens community voiced a couple of weeks ago on the, um, plan for, um, the green in front of Stevens Elementary and, um, really thankful for those, um, things. And I know that you've got a couple of things on your agenda today around the city planning and, um, you know, some infrastructure projects. Um, and I think I just want to encourage, like, I guess the first was a thanks, the second is an invitation and encouragement, um, for the council and for the city to, um, continue to engage in conversations with our school communities, um, as these projects are happening. Um, in particular, Stevens is, um, knows that we can only do so much with, um, infrastructure. We think that the changes to the plans on the green is going to go a long way, and so is the traffic study. Um, but we also know that we have to change what we do and how we behave, um, and our, our practices at the school to make sure that all of our kids and our families can get to school safe. So on Friday, we're going to have a, a community conversation, invite all council members and all, um, any city staff who want to attend or that I know that ADAS are on the line. So would love to have, um, any member of the community come be a part of brainstorming and, um, figuring out how we can make sure that we have safe corridors to our school at Stevens, but also to all the other schools in the community. So just want to continue to encourage partnership.
All right. Thank you very much. Those are all of the, uh, folks that I've signed up to speak. Thank you very much for, uh, coming and talking to councils tonight. We will go now to agenda item number one. This is the Colorado School of Mines Creekside Park Hill Stabilization Project, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a big group for this one this evening. Uh, Brandon Alenberg from our Parks and Rec Department is going to introduce, um, our presenters, since we get the presentation up.
Hi, thank you all. Yes, Brandon with Wheat Ridge Parks and Rec. Excited to have here with me a Colorado School of Mines, uh, senior student capstone team who's been working with us since August on an issue at Creekside Park. I don't want to give away too much information, everyone talk about it, but we have a minor issue at the hill at the park right now, and we're hoping that we can address that before it becomes more of a major issue. Um, but I'll let them all introduce themselves and get started.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Kate Sebastian, and I'm a civil engineering student on our team.
Hi, my name is Israel Salas, and I'm also a civil engineering student on our team.
My name is Thomas Hodges, and I'm an environmental engineering student.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Lake, and I'm a civil engineering student.
My name is Ethan Shep. I'm also a civil engineering student.
My name is Maggie Freeman, and I'm also a civil engineering student.
My name is Sebastian Taya, and I'm an environmental engineering student.
Awesome. Well, yeah, thank you guys. Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate it, um, and we're really excited to share with you what we have been working on. So we are the hillside heroes, um, and we worked on the Creekside Hill Stabilization Project. Is that? All right. So to start off with our agenda, we're going to go over a little bit of background, um, on our project, and then we'll talk about some site data collection that we did at the start of our project, and then we'll go into our design narrative, some of the proposed solutions that we came up with and how we ultimately picked the solution that we're going to move forward with. Um, then we'll talk briefly about our analysis and some calculations we did to verify our solution, as well as some technical drawings, our cost estimate, and then we will go over some, um, a quick summary and some next steps to take, uh, moving forward with the project.
All right, we can get started on some background information. We are focusing on a hill that extends from the west side to the east side of Creekside Park. Uh, it's a park located off Harlan and Forty-Eighth about. Um, this hill is experiencing a lot of soil stabilization issues along with erosion and the events of large storm events. Um, additionally, there's a lot of sediment buildup on the adjacent sidewalk, but also the hill, the park and the sidewalk itself is experiencing a lot of drainage issues. Um, so things like pooling and icing whenever those large storm events occur. And so the team has been tasked to really focus on these project goals, which are to stabilize the soil, the soil on steep grades, um, ensure that we manage that runoff and the erosion. We want to maintain the park aesthetic, so keep it looking nice and pretty. Um, also, we want to ensure the public safety along with wildlife safety, and then finally we want to develop a long-term solution.
All right. So now to just move to some site data collection that we have. Um, one of the very first things that we did was we ran a soil, uh, test, which was a sieve analysis test, and it got us this beautiful graph that y'all see up here. Um, it gave us our particle size distribution curves. Um, we went to the hill and we went to three different locations on the hill and found where we saw slope failure was the most evident, where there was no vegetation and just really like rock hard soil. And from that, um, we were able to make this graph, and we found that we had mostly sandy soil that we were dealing with. And then the next test we ran was a direct shear test, and we got these two lovely graphs up here, and those numbers that you're seeing bullet pointed up there just basically reinforce that we're working with sandy soil again.
All right. So in order to get a really good, uh, computer aided design surface, we went out and surveyed the hill last fall, and we were able to get the, we were able to get this nice surface to work off of to design our solutions. And you can see the areas where the contours are really bunched up are the areas that we're going to be working on because that's where this hill is the steepest and needs the most stabilization.
We were asked to investigate a perennial water leak in the side of the hill, and upon Sebastian and I going out there and collecting samples, we discovered that there was no chlorine in the water, meaning it's not a leak from a municipal water line, but there were high levels of phosphate and selenium, which will be addressed in our final solution that implements a water quality element to it.
All right. So after we collected some site data and did some testing, we came up with, um, multiple solutions and a method to select the best solution for the park. Um, so we kind of decided that we needed to separate our solution into stabilizing that soil and then dealing with the drainage off of the hill. And so we came up with this, um, decision matrix based on these five criteria up here, and they are weighted, um, based on what the team felt was, and the clients felt was the most important, and, um, we came up with the following solution. So our first is revegetating those three areas of the hill that have experienced slope failure. So like Maggie had said, there's hard, dry, exposed, um, soil there with no vegetation. So we plan to kind of break that soil up, add some, uh, compost and kind of revitalize it so we can revegetate it. And at the beginning stages of that, we will also have some netting, um, over it, as you can see in that picture, to make sure that that initial soil isn't eroding while those, um, roots develop. And then our next solution is a drainage ditch. And so our ditch is going to be placed at the base of our hill, right along it, um, and it's going to catch the storm water that drains from the hill and from the adjacent football field. Um, it'll be, because it's at the base of the hill, it'll be a safe distance from the sidewalk and at a safe slope from the sidewalks, so there's no kind of falling hazard for, for park users. Um, at the start of the project, we decided to go with the fully riprap lined ditch, but we kind of transitioned that to more of a grass swale, um, for various reasons that Ethan will mention later, um, with just some larger riprap along the edges to catch any sort of sediment that still deposits after we revegetate. Um, so this ditch will provide drainage of storm water towards our final solution, which, oh, which is our detention pond. And so this detention pond will be at the east side of the hill, um, right at the end of that ditch. It'll be naturally shaped, so it kind of weaves in and out of the trees, so we don't have to do any sort of tree removal for that ditch. Um, it'll be designed to hold small amounts of storm water for a storm that the park would regularly see, and then it will have an outlet pipe to Clear Creek, um, for any sort of larger storm event when that water level gets to a certain height. Um, the base vegetation in that pond is going to promote infiltration so that some of that water kind of just goes into the ground, and it will improve the quality of the water before it goes to Clear Creek. Um, we designed this pond to hold water for the maximum design storm that we, that our technical advisors felt necessary for the area.
So next, next we're doing the engineering analysis and calculations. So one of the first things we had to do, really understand Wheat Ridge as a location. So once we did the research, we first found out that it has a life zone that is between a plane and a foothill. Life zones is just taking the characteristics of a location. And we also found out that it has a harness for plants of six A. This gives us a couple of things. First, it tells us that we're in a dry slash semi-aired climate along with dealing with a wide range of temperature. And after our research, we figured out it's mainly clay and sandy looms, more focused on the sandy looms point. So when we were looking at the vegetation portion, we needed to figure out vegetation that first is native to Colorado. Second, it needed to survive in that wide mixture of temperature range. Third, it need little water to survive. Fourth, it needed to grow on a slope and help with the erosion since that's our big issue. Fifth, it needed to be easy to maintain. We don't want to put any, you know, a lot of work for the people. And last, it needed to be able to grow on clay slash sandy looms. So three plants we really were looking at were choke cherries, smooth sun mac and blue grammer, as you see from the table. They meet all of our criterias, they grow very well and help with erosion. And another plant that we thought about adding was a common sunflowers. Now, our location is by a lot of industrial area, and while we didn't find heavy metals in the water, we do believe during rainstorms from the highways and including industrial areas that could bring heavy metals, the common sunflower is pretty cool since it could remove many different types of metals. We're talking about zinc, um, copper, um, nickel. And so we think adding that to the park as well would be a very good option. As for the plants already there, near the place where we are then build the detention pond are snowing milkweeds. Um, they are really great for demonic butterflies, but they are very toxic to people and animals. So when we do relocate them, we just relocate them around the detention pond, not near the park or any areas that might see a lot of attraction.
So, uh, to design, uh, the riprap or grass swale drainage ditch that Kate was talking about earlier, the team used, um, some hydrology calculations, uh, to get the correct dimensions for that ditch so it would hold, uh, the correct flow rate that we're looking for, uh, to manage drainage, but also have dimensions that are, uh, safe for our park users, so not create a massive ditch. Uh, so the team used the Jefferson County Storm Criteria Manual, and some of those criteria are here on the left. So for fruit number and velocity, um, just to make sure that we're not exceeding those regulations, which is ultimately why we switched from a riprap to a grass swale was because that riprap drainage ditch was just not meeting the criteria that we needed to. Um, and over on the right here are just, uh, some variations of the equations that we're using to, uh, find those calculations and dimensions.
So now we're going to do technical drawings. Starting off with the detention pond. So the detention pond, while the different types, we're mainly going to do a more focused rain garden type of design. Um, this is mainly due to the type of chemicals we are dealing with around the area or contaminants, mainly phosphorus being a huge issue. And once we do start the revegetation, we see that increasing in the future. So why are we doing a dry detention pond with the rain garden type of style? Well, first, it looks very natural to the area. We don't want to just build a lot of gray trusses. It has ability to remove many pollutants, phosphorus being one of them, heavy metals being another. It has multiple functions like flood control and natural infiltration, and we are not planning to remove any trees. We really wanted it to look more natural around the area. So here's the detention pond. It is one by one slope, deepest part is only forty feet deep. It is, um, to hold up to a fifty year flood. The reason we didn't do a hundred years, we are in a flood plain. And while we could have possibly designed for a hundred years, we would have had to remove a lot of trees and really expand the area, which we really didn't want to do, along with that.
All right. So here we have, um, some of the CAD drawings of our drainage ditch. I apologize, it's a little bit hard to see, uh, but starting on the left there, there's an existing, um, ditch that comes already down the hill, uh, by the playground. And so we're basically going to tie our drainage ditch into that one. So the water's going to come off the hill and just wrap right around and go straight into our drainage ditch, um, which is kind of at the base there by that black line is the sidewalk, and then right to the right of that, right where that laser pointer is, where our ditch is going to be. Um, so here is the, um, our cross sections. This is our official cross section of what this drainage ditch is going to look like. Uh, the team designed an easy trapezoidal drainage ditch, uh, pretty, uh, easy and cheap to install. We went through a variety of iterations going through this to figure out what was our best options. Um, we would have liked to have designed a drainage ditch to hold a little bit more flow than this one, but we had to consider the safety of the park users, so how big our drainage ditch was going to be. Also, the cost of removing dirt is pretty expensive, and so our team ultimately came up with this design, um, which is about a ten-year storm drainage ditch. So we feel like this will adequately address the drainage issues facing the park, but will also be cheaper and easier to maintain and will not, um, endanger our park users or wildlife. Um, on the right, you can see we have some of that, uh, riprap still on the edge as well as some vegetation. This is just to keep any debris washing off the hill from coming into our drainage ditch, so we don't have to clean it out or ultimately dig it again as it fills up with sediment. Um, and then it's not shown in this drawing, but there's a potential even to grade, uh, shallower slope up to the sidewalk itself. So we have this two to one slope here on the left going to the base of the ditch, uh, but if we needed to, we could actually grade even, uh, really gradual up to the sidewalk as well. Um, these are some additional, uh, designs that we had proposed for larger, uh, flow volumes. So if for whatever reason this park experienced larger flow and this ditch was actually too small to handle, these are some proposed, um, cross sections that could handle a, a larger flow volume, more like a fifty-year storm. We felt like this was a little bit unrealistic for the current design, uh, but in the future, should we need it, we, uh, felt like we would present some of these options.
And now we can get into some cost estimates. Uh, the whole project we estimated would be about a hundred and fifty-one thousand ninety-two dollars. This is including a ten percent contingency. Um, and as we can see, the biggest things are the detention pond and the grass swale. The detention pond makes up about thirty-six percent of the entire budget, and the grass swale makes up about forty-six percent of the entire, but entire budget. Uh, this is mainly because dirt is very expensive or relatively expensive to transport out of your, um, site. So it's kind of cheap to actually dig and do the actual project, but whenever, when we get into talks about removing that and transporting it to a different site, then that's when we start to get, um, that budget increase within, within our estimation.
All right. So for a conclusion, we'll talk about some next steps that need to be taken to move this project forward. Um, so basically, overall for our whole project, we are just a group of students. So ultimately, this would need to be reviewed by a practicing engineer and, um, stamped for implementation. Um, then there's just a few permits that would need to get filled out. So there are two permits for grading. The first is the four oh four U S Army Corps of Engineers permit. This is specified under the Clean Water Act. Um, this is required for discharge of any sort of fill material into any U S waters, and this includes a flood plain. Um, we aren't bringing any fill material in since we will be mostly cutting material out, but this also goes for that cut material that needs to sit on the site before it's held out. Um, and then our next permit is the CLOMER or LOMER, so the conditional letter of map revision and the letter of map revision. Um, this is from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The CLOMER, um, will ensure that all national flood insurance program, um, requirements are met for all of our grading, and then the LOMER will officially alter that, um, flood plain map with our new boundaries that we've created with our grading. Um, and then the final permitting we need to do is clean water permitting for our ditch and pond. This is specified under the Environmental Protection Agency, um, for any sort of dumping of any possible pollutants into existing waterways. And so this, um, includes our kind of outlet, uh, pipe that we have that would send water there, but this shouldn't be a huge issue since we have that vegetation that's improving the water quality as it goes through the ditch and into the pond. the water quality as it goes through the ditch and into the pond. So here's just a quick summary of what our team has completed. And if anyone has any questions? Oh, yes. We also, our team was able to create a model of the site. We can pass it around. Thank you. Yeah, this model will be shown at our showcase at our school, so. Oh, and we also have our plans that we created in CAD to show you guys, so. But are there any questions? We can take it this time.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Great presentation. Let's go to questions. We'll start with Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and great presentation. I think you guys did a great job on this, very detailed. My one question, I guess, is as you're planning for, you mentioned like a 50-year storm or 100-year storm, what, you know, what's the criteria? What's the discussion that you guys had as you're kind of looking at that design? Do we want, is it cost? Is it, what's that discussion look like?
Sure. So the main kind of reasons why we ended up going with the dimensions of the ditch that we did was just a, to calculate how much flow rate your ditch is gonna require, depending on per year of storm, it's a lot of hydrologic calculations that I won't go through, because it's kind of complex. But basically, we have about a 31-acre drainage basin coming down into this hill, and with that, combined with some of the infiltration rates with pavement and such things, most of that water, basically, that hits that basin doesn't infiltrate into the ground, it all kind of comes rushing down to that hill. So even for a 50-year storm, your flow rate in CFS is about 70, which is pretty high. And so the kind of ditch that would need to handle even a 50-year storm was gonna be at minimum like 3 feet deep and like 9 to 13, 14 feet wide, like this massive, massive ditch that our team just felt like wasn't either realistic and or safe, you know? I wanted to keep the design under, at least at 2 feet deep, and not go steeper than 2-to-1 slopes on the side. And we went through a number of designs, and we just felt like even this trapezoidal channel would just be even the easiest and cheapest to install. So that 50-year storm, again, every 50 years, right? So we felt like even the 10-year storm would be adequate for any flow coming down that hill. The likelihood of it ever reaching 70 CFS at one point, that's a small river, we just felt like was unrealistic. And so we wanted to prioritize the, some of the costs and the safety of our park users as well in that event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Oom.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody. What a great presentation. Love the model, takes me back to my college days. So I have a couple of questions. One was for the detention. Did you guys, what was the reasoning for having the detention near the creek? Because I know that sometimes when you have that close of proximity, that you can just discharge into the creek without having the detention.
So a big reason for the detention pond is because of the revegetation, along with just the contaminants that the revegetation will create, so like the phosphorus, along with the heavy metals. So the reason we went with the rain garden type of design, because that's very good for moving those. And we, one of the fears at first was how impactful will a detention pond be to the creek, since we can't increase the discharge too much? We don't want any lawsuits, along with we don't want to stop any water from going to the creek. So we just really want to make sure a design was able to first infiltrate anything that is small enough, but along with any time that we might have a large discharge, we just send it into the creek, since the location, based on the position, all of that water will already go to the creek.
And then, and then I have a couple of other questions. I was really excited to see phaser remediation. That's something I usually don't see very often. I do have a concern with the sunflowers, because unfortunately, we do get a lot of rodents, we get rats along the Clear Creek, and the sunflowers attract them. Speaking from experience of having neighbors who have tried to feed sunflowers to squirrels, so perhaps maybe my comment is just, you know, maybe look at a different plant than the sunflower. I would love, if we didn't have such a rodent issue, I'd love to see sunflowers down there. I think it's a great idea. And definitely, you know, doing some type of phaser remediation in that area is a wonderful idea, but just that consideration. And then, you really checked off a box of the, using that, the sumac, which has a cultural significance with the Ute tribes. It has a lot of medicinal properties. And I don't know if that was intentional, but congrats for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd very much like to thank everybody on the team here for this just wonderful effort. If you guys are an example of engineers of the future, I know we're gonna be in good The other thing I'd like to congratulate you is the obvious teamwork that went into this. It wasn't just a single effort. You guys all worked together, and that's very obvious from the result here. I'm gonna defer the couple dozen questions I have about the project itself until it comes back in the form of an engineering plan. But I do have one, and I'll let you answer this in low, medium, or high. But as of today, April 15th, does the city of Wheat Ridge face a risk of a slide, a serious slide on the hill?
Yeah. I would say risk of like, a serious slide is probably, probably low, but I'll let Kate.
Yeah. When we did our soil testing, we only had to do it on those three areas, because the majority of the hill, even though it is just as steep or even steeper in some spots, the vegetation is holding it, so we're not quite sure why those few areas experienced that slope failure. But that's where we're pretty certain most of that erosion is coming from. So once those are revegetated, we have no reason to think that the whole hill could fall out, since it was really only three areas about that wide, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and great job. Thank you so much for this. I just have a quick circle back on the water testing. Someone mentioned that there may have been some other concerns that came out of the water testing. I see selenium and phosphate, but were there any other concerns, or did I just make that up?
That's a very good question. We compared the water quality testing parameters against Regulation 38, which is the discharge limits. So besides the phosphate, which is likely from lawn care, and selenium, which we don't know, all other parameters were completely within regulation to be discharged into Clear Creek.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for your presentation and for your work on this. And I believe you spent two semesters working on this. So my question's not necessarily technical about the project, but it's about the process. And I'm just wondering, what really was, working with city staff and spending, you know, two semesters on it, and working with professionals in jobs that you will be working with later on in your profession, what was your, I guess, what do you think was the most successful part of that partnership, or what was your biggest takeaway from that partnership?
First of all, like, all of us want to give a huge thank you to our clients, because it was, they made it so easy for us. And I think the biggest part of it was our constant communication, especially towards the beginning parts of our project. We met with them pretty consistently every two weeks, just to check in, make sure that we were still on the same page. And we had a schedule shared with them, shared within the team. We used Trello as our project management tool, and just had everything really lined out and kind of evenly split between the team. But I would say the biggest part was our constant communication with our wonderful clients that made this project really very enjoyable. Yeah. Anyone else want to add?
I would also like to say thank to, thank you to our professors. A lot of us had to go to many office hours to talk with them about our designs, ideas, especially for that detention pond. Another thank you to some of us talked with our companies about some of the recommendations. So one of my, my company recommended when it came to phosphorus issue, maybe partially talking with the city, convincing people to not use fertilizers that has phosphorus or phosphates in it, and go to more free, you know, fertilizers without those in it, just to help out the city when it comes to cleaning those up.
Yeah. And I just want to add one more thing to that, and just thank specifically Kate and Thomas were kind of our main points of contact for our clients, especially Kate with, she was kind of our main organizer of this whole, of this whole team, you know? She was the kind of the driving force behind getting everything done on time and in the right way. And so I want to give a big shout out to her, honestly, for her completely outstanding work in kind of keeping our team focused and on track this whole semester. So she did a fantastic job.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
Thanks. Great job. I also have students who are going to present in about a month on a different topic, and you guys just did an excellent job and clearly worked together really well as well. I think some of my questions were answered. I did, so I think one of you mentioned, initially when you were talking about the source of the water issue, you checked to see if it was domestic water, it wasn't. Was it just runoff from above the hill?
We do not know. We, we know that because it's not chlorinated, it's not from a municipal water line, because they have residual chlorine. It's most likely what people call urban druel, which is just a...
That's awesome.
Yes, ma'am. It's just a general term for runoff from the city.
Huh. Is it something that we should look into? Because it sounds like it's significant enough that, that more of it could possibly affect the hillside. Just curious, what, your thoughts as engineers, what, besides the mitigating of asking people maybe not to use certain fertilizers? Yeah. Just your thoughts.
Yes, ma'am. So it is a perennial leak. We actually went up there in January, and it was still flowing, and there was a big, about six-foot cube chunk of ice from it. So it is flowing consistently, and it is flowing annually. I would say just keep up with testing, and the most important thing would to be, to look at the output after the water quality aspect is put in, is to look at what's actually discharging into Clear Creek.
Yeah. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. And I just had one comment about what Councilor Oom said about our, we also have a rat problem in Wheat Ridge around some of our waterways. And I wanted to agree with his comment about sunflowers. They also emit a little bit of a poison to other plants, and so they don't encourage other plants around them. But there are other things like relatives to it that will do the same mitigating qualities like a, I think they're called commonly like a black-eyed susan, a smaller, it's a smaller sunflower that can grow in and amongst other things. But thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mayor. I really want to thank you guys. I, first of all, just want to recognize, we, you know, when we're on city council, we come here and just, you know, every Monday night, get three or four presentations. And your presentation was actually incredibly professional. It was informative and concise and dense, and included the math. No one ever brings the math. Thanks for, thanks for including the math tonight.
Glad to appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah. It reminded me that you guys are doing things I cannot. But this park's actually in the district that I represent, myself and Councilor Oom, who's sitting two down from me. And, you know, between us, he's a landscape architect, and I did my graduate studies in wetlands mitigation. So I just want to share that, like, as the city councilor is representing this, like, we have a deep appreciation for the work. And this park actually is one of our parks that I think is, you know, people may not even realize it's in our city, because it's kind of detached from, you know, the civic pulse. And I want to recognize that the work that you're doing actually has a real impact on the quality of life in our community, and my district in particular. And this is one of the things I really appreciate about, you know, this partnership that the city has with School of Mines, is that your year of work on this actually is really appreciated and meaningful, and will contribute to the quality of, you know, enjoying Wheat Ridge, whether you're here to play baseball or at your neighborhood park. So I just really want to thank you for contributing to that. And then, and I did have a question, but someone else beat me to it. But, you know, the other thing, too, that you really captured in your decision-making matrix is, like, so many of our values as a city around, you know, being, you know, good stewards of our resources and caring a lot about what are we planting and where, and, you know, just being mindful of how water moves through our community. So thank you for, you know, being good stewards of the things we care about, and I'm looking forward to the engineering plans coming from stamped engineers, and in a couple years, hopefully, it'll be one of you guys. So, all right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for being here tonight. This was a wonderful presentation. I've had the opportunity to see two of the Colorado School of Mines' presentations, and I will just echo Councilmember Holtein's comments in that you did a wonderful job. You were all very professional, and you even explained it in terms in which someone who's not like-minded and does not have an engineer kind of mind could understand it. And so I really appreciate just the way you summarized everything. We all seem to work very well together. I remember how difficult group projects were in college, and it really does serve a significant purpose. You do not realize how often you need to collaborate and work in groups and manage varying personalities, and so kudos to you guys, and thank you for coming and presenting to us. And I'm really looking forward to these plans as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I want to say thank you very much for coming. Great presentation. Great, what I really sort of keyed in on is that you kept in contact with the client, and, you know, really feedback to the client, so that the client can understand sort of what the ramifications are of any sort of decision, you know, decision points that you need to do. I chair the Board of Directors for the Mile High Flood District, and I hope you guys will, will keep the Mile High Flood District in mind as you move into the professional life, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor? They're gonna take a picture. Mayor? Mayor, I have a quick question about, is there any way that we could have a sign or something at the park about this project? Because it just seems like both the education about the runoff from uphill of that everything goes downhill, and, and the fact that we work with, with engineering students from mines, and just, just seems like this would be a great connecting...
I would think we could put some, not advertising, but some signage up, so the public knows what we're doing and who really was contributory to the process. So we'll get Karen and her group to work on that.
That'd be very cool.
That's okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Okay. We will now go to agenda item number two. This is the City Plan Status Update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lauren, you gonna introduce? Getting your team up here. We got a full house on this one also. We'll get them seated. Good.
My comments tonight will be very brief, because we have a great team managing this. So Ella Stevie is here tonight. Thanks for helping us kick this project off, and I'll let... Maybe not.
I have.
Very briefly.
But I forgot.
Yes.
There we go. So I have been once for the contract award, but still, this is my first study session. I'm Ella Stevie. I'm a senior neighborhood planner, and I'm the project manager for the city plan. So I've been here, I've corresponded with you guys as we kind of start to get this set up, but we are very excited to be here tonight to kick off the first phase of our public engagement. I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all in person for your great support and help in assembling... and help in assembling our steering committee. With your recommendations, we were able to assemble an 18-person committee of community members, and it's, we've had our first meeting in March, and it was a really great, interesting conversation. I'm already excited for our second one, which is later this week. But tonight, we get to dive into the details with all of you. So in a moment, I will introduce, or for many of you, reintroduce our consultant team, CZB. We're going to run through some slides tonight. You may have seen in your packet that there was a summary of quite a lot of existing conditions analysis. We're not going to present all of that tonight. However, if we have that data, those slides, and so if you have any specific questions on items, we're happy to pull that up and talk about it. But the reason we didn't want to present all of it is because we really want to spend the bulk of our time here tonight discussing with you. So CZB is going to lead us through a discussion of a couple of specific questions based on, yeah, to really set the tone of the project. So I will hand it over to them and let them get going.
Thanks, Ella. Nice to be back. Nice to see many of you again, whom we've seen many times before, and some new faces as well. It's always fun to come back to Wheat Ridge, and we do like to brag on Wheat Ridge quite a bit out there in the rest of America because the planning is usually followed by action here in Wheat Ridge, and that's something that we think is really important, and, you know, you all think it's important as well, and it's something to be proud of. Just a reintroduction to the members of the team that we have here. I'm Eric Amy. Behind me is Thomas Eddington, Charles Bukey, and Lauren Holm from our team. Charles and Lauren, and Thomas, you've seen before. And we are joined by a colleague you've not seen before, Matt Ingles, who's part of our CZB East team, not the Western team, but we couldn't leave him out of this one. So Matt and I will be handling things today. What we want to get done tonight is we're going to talk, Matt's going to talk a little bit about the elements of a successful plan, and what that means to us. We're going to do a quick, some housekeeping items, kind of process and timeline, what's happening when, what are the different pieces, so everyone's got familiarity with that, just basic, you know, information. And then get to, what we really want to talk about is the big things. We'll talk about what big things are, what big things means to us in this project in a few minutes when we get there. But that's what we want to do, and so we're going to do this. We'll go through project overview a little bit, then Matt's going to do the big things, and then we can, you know, just close on some next steps, so everyone knows what's coming next. I do want to reiterate what Ella said, which is we're not going to share a ton of data slides tonight. We do have some stuff. If you have questions about anything you read in that attachment, please feel free to share them when it makes sense. And if they come up in the course of the conversation that we have, you know, we can always navigate to them as well. But we didn't want to spend a lot of time talking at you tonight. We want to hear from you tonight.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Well, thanks for carving out some time for us to talk about the city plan. This is a really exciting project. I do hail from the East, so I am used to the snow. Not quite as much snow as that you got last month when we tried to kick off our first meeting and we end up being virtual, but that's okay. We're really looking forward to meeting the steering committee that you put together later this week in person. So as Eric mentioned, we have a few things that we want to talk about just in terms of our approach to comprehensive plans, in this case, the city plan, and then a little bit about schedule and things like that. But then we want to spend a majority of the time talking about what you think the big things are that this plan needs to get right. And we will share a few things that we heard from the committee members from last month's meeting as well, and then we're going to be taking this to the public tomorrow evening to get their input on also what they think the big things are. So there's a couple of key characteristics that we think are really important in creating a great comprehensive plan or a great city plan, and that's something that we're looking to do for Wheat Ridge, is to create a great plan. The first and foremost is what we refer to as getting the big things right. And when we talk about the big things, these are the things that are so important that they require special attention and resources to make sure that we get them right. These are the things that, over the course of the next 10 years, how they are treated could determine whether the city is an even better place than it is today. So it's important that we get these things right, that we dig into them, understand them, and they ultimately end up usually becoming the priorities in the plan. So we're talking about a handful of those things that are really, really important. The second thing that we think is really important to a great comprehensive plan is planning for what is known. There are trends and key issues that we'll identify, that we want to allow the public to not only understand them, but to also weigh in on those desired outcomes and also the actions and the strategies that need to be put in place to move those things forward. And then the last component that we think is part of a great comprehensive plan is creating a decision-making framework for the things that are unknown. There's no way that we can know what's going to happen, you know, in a year from now or two years from now, let alone five or six, seven years after the plan is done. If we had a crystal ball, we would plan for all of those things, but unfortunately, we don't. So we want to make sure that the city plans provide some guidance on the things that we just can't anticipate here in '24 and '25. And those, that framework is rooted in community values. I heard somebody mention values earlier that the group before us, the students we're talking about. So identifying what those core values are and then the associated planning principles, which tend to be durable over time, that can really kind of withstand the test of time and provide some guidance and usefulness in the comprehensive plan for those things that we just have no way of knowing here in the future, or what's going to happen in the future. And then, of course, we also want to make sure that a great plan always focuses on the things that we can say yes to. Those are the things that we know we want to happen, so let's plan for those things. It's a natural thing, you know, through the process, we're going to hear what we don't want to happen to happen, but we want to make sure the plan spends a lot of time focusing on what we do want to happen, and then how do we make those things happen with strategies and actions to move those things forward. Little bit about process and timeline. We have a three-phase process. We're in the tail end of Phase One. We kicked off in January, which we really refer to as Phase Zero, is just getting the project up and running. We had the kickoff meeting with the steering committee last month, ended up being virtual, but that's okay. It was a really good discussion. It was a good way to kick off the project. We've done some preliminary community assessments, which Ella had mentioned in your packet. We're not going to go through a lot of that stuff tonight, but if you have questions, we'll certainly, and there will be also a report eventually that will be available to you as well with a little bit more detail. And then we're also going to be kicking off the project tomorrow night with the community with engagement in round one with the open house. So we're really looking forward to that. And then we'll move into Phase Two, the envisioned phase, which will have two rounds of engagement. That's where we really begin to roll up our sleeves and talk about the focus area planning, preliminary concepts, working through implications and trade-offs and those types of things that are associated with some key topics. And then the last phase of the project is really the plan development. We also have engagement as part of that round, and we'll produce the draft document that will be available for review and then move through the adoption process. So with a little bit more detail, we have a 15-month process through '24 and then finishing up hopefully by March of next year. You can see that we're in the tail end of Phase One. We're in April with engagement of round one. So we'll be kicking off Phase Two over the next couple of months, and that will be a six-month process. It's really the heart of the working and developing of the concepts in the plan. So we also believe in high-tech, high-touch approach to community engagement. We'll have online surveys. We'll also have in-person events like we are tomorrow night. The project website will be available for comment 24/7. And then we're also prepared to have targeted intercepts if needed with certain groups and presentations and things like that to make sure we reach the folks that we need to reach. And then, of course, we have What's Up Wheat Ridge that's up and running, kickoff tomorrow night, 4:30 to 6:30 at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center, where we have, I think, four stations, about, geez, 15, 16 boards, something like that. And then we also, I know we have some other events with other city projects going on as well. So it's going to be an exciting event for sure. Okay, any questions about process approach, anything like that, before we get into this exercise of getting your thoughts on the big things? So what are the big things that this planning process should get right? We're going to come back to this, but as I mentioned, these are the things that will likely play a lead role in determining whether the city is a better place than it is today 10 years from now. But before we do that, and before you get into it, we're going to go one more slide and share some of the things that came out of that first meeting with the steering committee when we asked them the same question about the big things. So I'll give you a chance to look at some of these things. Shared sense of community. I think the one thing we've heard from a number of folks is just being able to efficiently get around without a car. So that active transportation plan that was done in 2017, I think, comes into play there. Certainly a diverse range of housing options. So this is the list we have so far. So if we'll go back one, I can leave this up if you'd like, or we'd love to hear what you think this comprehensive plan or this city plan, the big things that you need to get right and understand.
Why don't you go ahead? I usually field the questions, but why don't you go ahead and field the hands as they go up and then we'll have more fluid.
Absolutely. Rachel.
I'm so excited.
We're excited that you're excited.
Yeah, oh my gosh. And I'm just so excited that it's CZB specifically. You guys have just done such a good job working with us, and we love putting your good plans into action. So I'm going to start, I'm going to start with, we need a new motto. Our deep roots, short commutes really makes it sound like people live here to get out of the city, and the only way to live here is to live here forever. And I really feel like this is a plan that's stewarding a transition away from like what when I moved here was deeply believed to be a bedroom community to being a destination. And so I think that this plan is really, you know, rethinking us as that, I think the bullet point you had about being, you know, like a really distinct, distinct identity and what comes with that. And then I want to just call a little tension around city plan because I think that identity still really wraps around a small-town experience in the metropolitan area. And so it just, so to me, that's a big thing to get right is, no, it sounds silly, but the new motto, which is, you know, we are a place that you want to come to, not get out of, and that there's a lot of different ways to be a part of this city. And I think, when I think about like the things we need to get right, when I first moved here and was getting involved in the city and I had a coffee with our then Public Works Director, and he was saying that his wife had said that the corridors looked tired. And I think we've done a lot since then, but when I really think about it, one of the things that could really hurt the city with all the good momentum that we have now, like our corridors look a lot better, is not getting caught in deferred maintenance, being able to prevent us from being able to continue making visionary investments in the city. So we really need to be able to think both big vision, but to be able, you know, we do still have deferred maintenance or deferred investments in the city, and so to not lag on those, it feels really important to me. So, and then the last thing that I would gladly forego the first two on is we need to lead with climate action and resiliency, and it can't stand alone, it's got to show up everywhere because increasingly, we, there's a lot of unknowns in the future, but, I mean, in the 10 years I've lived here, there's just been increasing impacts from, you know, climate and, you know, the need to be a resilient community and setting our citizens up for success and our businesses up for success. And leading as a city around resiliency seem like just critically important. So I love talking about economic development and housing and all of that stuff, but if resiliency isn't like hard-baked into it, then we're going to be doing a lot of like chasing our tails instead of investing in our big ideas. So those are my three starting salvos. Thank you.
They're good ones.
Councilor Weaver.
Thanks, and thanks, Councilor Holtein, for those comments. I'm going to piggyback on her last one. I think the climate change piece is super important, and what I found, and forgive me, I'm going to be a little long-winded in this, we have a priority of agriculture in Wheat Ridge, but it's really has to do with this historic identity of being a growing community at one time. And to me, how you can sort of rebrand that in current has more to do with the environmental connection that many of us have, and I think many of the gardeners and farmers in this community are very connected to how to keep Wheat Ridge thriving, and it's very connected with what Councilor Holtein was saying, and just how to really not talk about those things as sort of separate siloed things, but like, and I'm going to give the example of the opportunity we have with the Lutheran Legacy Camp. The Lutheran Legacy Campus, in that there will be some sort of green space in there. And I think we have the opportunity, kind of like we heard from our students just in the presentation before, these are all connected things, right? We need to fix this bank in this park so that the water doesn't keep eroding, but we should be also talking about the thing that's happening at the top of the hill and that runoff and those phosphates. And so I think we have this larger opportunity to get ahead, and I think oftentimes in that, that sort of background that Councilor Holtein brought up, we often have compared ourselves to Denver, and Denver is sort of doing what Denver does in terms of their environmental leadership or what they're pushing for Denver. And I think we really have an opportunity to come out ahead of that as a, having a different identity in that sustainable environmental piece. And I don't know if that makes sense, so I'm going to give you one last example, and then I will be quiet. I was just in the small country of Uruguay, which is the same size as Colorado and has the more, the same amount of beef production, and strangely, it's very, very similar to Colorado in a lot of ways. They have, as a country of two and a half million people, decided that though they have a very traditional agricultural identity, they're going to be zero-carbon by very soon. And so it really struck me that here is this population that says, we're going to keep these values that we have, but we're going to knock it out of the park on this whole climate change thing, and we're going to change, we're going to rethink how we do everything. And so driving around in places that felt a lot like Wheat Ridge in terms of the community feeling, there was this completely forward, new identity around their environmental connection to their community, if that makes sense. And I was just really struck that we can create that with that historic agricultural identity in mind and really update that and keep it at the same time. Thank you for letting me belabor that point.
Thank you, Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things, do you mind going back to the list? So there's not anything on here that I disagree with. I would say, though, you know, the attract and retain desired local businesses and kind of what Councilwoman Holtein said about our corridors, they are getting better, but they are still tired. You know, 44th Sheraton to Watson specifically is tired. But I would say that our private sector has been doing the work. So if you look at 38th Avenue and you look at all the changes that have happened along 38th Avenue, those changes are the private sector, they're small businesses that are updating those old and reusing all the old buildings there and really bringing that corridor up. As a city, we haven't been doing the work on 38th to help be in partnership with those private investors there. And so I think that when we're looking at our corridors, we really need to look at how are we engaging with the desired local businesses that our community finds important. how are we engaging with the desired local businesses that our community finds important and, and making sure that they're being supported in, in the things they need. Now, we are going to be looking at sidewalk gaps and things like that. That's of course, one way that we can support those businesses to, to make the access to them better. But I think that we just need to try to think about how can we partner in, in making sure that those investments that the private sector is putting in, into our community is going to pay off for them. And then another thing, when you're, in, in your action packet, in your memo, there was a, a thing that kind of struck me and it said, and it was under community character and it said, whether Wheat Ridge wants, should one day have a character that feels unified or whether it should remain a place full of places is a question to explore in the city plan. I agree. I guess I would say that I, one of the things that I like about our community is that it is a place full of places. It's oftentimes, I consider it a lot like a, a patchwork quilt. And, and I don't know that we need to try to uniform, conform our, our community as a whole, but when we're looking at exploring in the city plan, I think that we should look at how do we support a place full of places and, and, and keep that as part of, I find that as part of our identity, honestly. And then, and then I completely agree with Councilwoman Hultein about the motto. I absolutely agree. And I, I think it would be really great if we could come up with something that really speaks to who we are now, not who we were.
Thank you, Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this update. I'm looking forward to getting this process underway. So I, I would have to agree with many of these points, particularly the attracting and retaining desired local businesses and having, or creating and maintaining a diverse range of housing options. You know, as you've cited in your memo, we've, our median age has, has decreased a little bit, and I, I think that we want to continue to attract young families into this area. I happen to be like the epitome of the deep roots, short commutes. I've lived here my entire life. I work at Lutheran Hospital. My kids go to the neighborhood school. You know, we've just categorically been the, having those deep roots and, and really enjoy those short commutes, I must say. So I think that something that's missing from this is really, and, and you, you guys actually did highlight it in, in the memo, but Clear Creek is such a huge asset in the community and it really is a hidden gem. So I would hate to bring more users to it because I kind of like that it's one of those hidden gems, but it, it really goes through most of Wheat Ridge, which is fairly unique to the surrounding communities. And I just, I don't think that we highlight that enough. And it's a really great way to get around the city in, you know, as a pedestrian and as a cyclist that takes them away from the roads because I don't want to make it like, I don't, I don't, one, don't think we need a complete overhaul of our identity. I think we need to build upon what makes Wheat Ridge great and of course, look to the future and, and, and take those into consideration for big picture items. But I, I just, I think we're too focused on getting people out of their cars as if that's not the main form of transportation, and it is. I think one of the sustainability pieces that we should be considering after the major windstorm knocked out significant power is when we're making these infrastructure improvements under, undergrounding the, the power lines. So we can mitigate some of those issues that, that we've faced and, and kind of prepare and have that resiliency piece. And of course, the Lutheran redevelopment is going to be one of the biggest conversations facing our community moving forward. So I'm really glad that we're going to be tackling that kind of in conjunction alongside this process. I think that they're going to cohesively work together pretty significantly. And so I have been a huge advocate for investing in a Wheat Ridge city center on the Legacy Campus and will continue to pound that drum. I think we've outgrown City Hall and I think that that provides a great opportunity for us to potentially repurpose and, and create our, our identity in Wheat Ridge within an area that has served the community for over 120, 20 years. And so I, I get a little hairy about like the whole overhauling community identity, although I know it's time to kind of polish things up and really take a look at, at what we are now as opposed to what we were. And I really love that we've always taken a nod to our heritage and, you know, the Carnation Festival is still a significant piece in our community. And I've had the privilege of, of serving on that board since 2015 and chair the parade. And like, it is one of the most fulfilling things each and every year. It's very, very hard work, particularly as a volunteer, but every single year after the Carnation Festival is finished, it's just, I feel very fulfilled and accomplished in bringing something that celebrates our incorporation and really brings all of our community together. And we see over 30,000, around 30,000 people in three days. And this, last year, we did some, some demographic and stats and most of them are from Wheat Ridge or surrounding areas. So it is definitely a community oriented event that brings locals to Anderson Park. And so I'm really excited about the Clear Creek Bakerspace. And of course, you know, having lived on 44th Avenue for most of my life, I do think that we've had significant public, private partnerships on 38th Avenue, including the Green. We have seen significant investment in that area and that corridor over the last decade. And I think that it's been kind of at the detriment of other primary corridors. And I know that we're kind of shifting our focus there, but I, I really do want to see some investment and, and improvement along the 44th Avenue corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'll echo most of what Counselor Hultein said, and especially the fact that CZB is back. I enjoy working with you guys a lot. One of the reasons we're so able to implement plans is because your plans tend to be very implementable. So we, we don't have to reinvent wheels every, every time we work with you guys. So I appreciate that. You know, I think this list is pretty comprehensive. I don't, as, as Counselor Dozeman kind of said, I don't think that we need to be throwing away our heritage and, and try to reinvent who we are. In fact, I think we need to embrace, kind of like Counselor Hoppe said, we're a place full of places. And we want to make that transition from place to place to place smooth so you can get there easily, but it doesn't all have to be the same. I think that we're a patchwork quilt and that's the way this city was built. And gosh darn it, that's the way we like it, you know? You know, we, we were carved out of, of other places because they wanted to be this place. And, and I think that that's, you know, where we somehow became a bendered community where the whole focus was everybody going somewhere else, you know? This place is a pretty special place. So I think, you know, if we can hold on to that identity as much as possible. And, you know, I, I think I said this during the NRS a number of years ago, Wheat Ridge is kind of cool because it's like 20 years behind everywhere else around, but I still feel like we need to continue moving forward with that. So I'm, I'm comfortable being 20 years behind on a lot of stuff, high density, all that stuff. What I'm, but we do need to continue to move forward because the rest of the world moves forward too. So we need plans that are, are scalable to that. You know, I think as we look at the economic plan and how that fits in here, having more diversity in our, our businesses, I, I think, you know, I was counting with somebody the other day, we have like 26 coffee shops now. We, you know, for, for a long time, we had like zero and now we have like 26. So, you know, how can we bring in maybe some other types of businesses that might help our, our economy in, in a different way? What are we missing? That sort of thing. I think I said during the NRS too, that it's very tough to buy a pair of pants or a shovel in Wheat Ridge. Like we don't have a Walmart. You know, there's, there's only a few places to do that. So if, you know, if we can get some more options for retail, different things like that, that'll get people to want to come here. I think we're starting to do that as far as our, our food and our restaurants and stuff like that. But if we can get them to be able then to walk down the street to a boutique or, or something like that, I, I think of some of those smaller shops like Gaylord Street, things like that. So, you know, as, as we, as we look at developing some of those streets. But, and, and maybe even as we look at Lutheran, not so much on that, but on the housing and as we look at the city center, you know, I think another thing that Counselor Hultein said, which, and if anybody watches HTV, TV, like the House Hunters, they, they think they're going to have all this money to play with their house and then all of a sudden they find a crack in the, and, and we've been finding sinkholes in a lot of our streets. And, you know, I don't want us needing to fix sinkholes to keep us from being able to move forward with a, a new Wheat Ridge city center or, or some of the other cool stuff that we're, that we're looking at. So, you know, how can we make sure that we're investing in our, you know, the stuff that's going to be here for, for long term, but also being able to invest in, in the cool stuff that's going to bring more people in to help, to help do that? So, you know, how can we bring in Clear Creek Crossing and make sure that's, that's in line with everything else too? So, thank you.
Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Potem. I want to build off of that. I want to, I want to talk about lenses. So I think, you know, if we were to take the city Wheat Ridge as it is and, you know, take it completely out so there's nothing around us, you know, 32,000 population, and just evaluate it, where we're at, and we, we looked at it from a more of a visual and assigned colors to, you know, perhaps it's the coffee shops and said, you know, what does this look like? And then we start looking at, you know, different types of housing and, and that's going to have different colors. And I start looking and it's like, what does our 32,000 population look like? How does it stand alone on, by itself? I've been to other 32,000, I love it here, but I've been to other 32,000 population cities in different parts of the states and, and they, they have more land, they do have a lot more things, but I just want us to, to think about that. I know that the city's done a great job of, you know, kind of trying to pave the runways of, you know, doing the legislative rezone on, on 38th and, and Wadsworth and the Clear Creek. And, and what I feel is a big priority is to, is to have that diversification. I always see Wheat Ridge as this, it's this river. It's always moving, it's always been moving, it's going to be moving long after I'm gone, you know? It was here when there was farm fields, there were no homes. And then there were homes and it's just constantly moving. And it's not a, it's, for me, it's never about a control, it's always about a manage, you know? How do we manage the growth? Where do we want that growth? And, and, you know, the taller structures have different colors than the smaller structures. And I really love to see diversification, but not uniformly throughout the city. I like having different focus areas that I think what's really important is to, how do we, and I've heard a couple of this, ideas of like, how do we create special spaces? You know, think about like, I don't know if anybody's been to like McGregor Square down by the Rockies, you know, and you get it and you can just feel that space. It's like, this is really unique, you know? When I was sitting on Illegal Pete's, you know, I thought like, this is a window that I'm sitting on that deck and I can see Crown Hill. That's a special space. So how do we create special spaces? And, and I'm just thinking about that visually and, and like, you know, we can't do this uniformly and no one's going to want that, but I, I'd love to see a lot of different diversity, different scales, different, you know, shops, you know? You know, think of, you know, it's like when you're walking around and I've spent a lot of time on foot, walking along 38th and I think about, you know, and I don't know the answer to this, but like, is it best to have, you know, coffee, 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 pizza, pizza, pizza? Or does it make sense to, to mix them up, you know? And maybe there needs to be an office in between there. And I start thinking about like, how does that relate to like music, right? It's like, do we all want to just hear the same note over and over? Or do we like to have a little bit of variety in those different notes? And, you know, what is, and everybody's going to like different music. And so it's, it's a hard task that you guys have, but I, I really, I just want to emphasize, I really like seeing that different variety. And for me, when I start seeing the different buildings and different things, different spaces, it starts to have that music. And we all know that when we get that certain set of music, people are like, I really like that. What you guys are doing is really cool and I want to, I want to be in that experience. So that's, that's what I want to point out. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to commend the, this initial report and its focus on, or it's trying to bring the focus back to big things. That really, if, if we can, I think if we can get the big things, the rest of it will, will fall into place. Anybody from Chicago, like I am, knows Daniel Burnham. And Daniel Burnham said, make no small plans. It is important to keep the idea in, in terms of a city, looking at bigger picture, looking at more than just individual properties, looking at how Wheat Ridge is a suburb next to the biggest city in the state and there's going to be traffic, traffic has to be managed. I went back and looked at the Envision Wheat Ridge document from 2009 and goal number three was reduce traffic congestion. Now, we are making a giant step toward reducing traffic congestion with the Wadsworth project and, and that will eventually someday maybe be finished. No, I'm kidding. We've just got about another year to go. But it is an important, an important thing to keep in mind that we have busy streets in, in this city. And while most of the traffic on those busy streets probably is just passing through and they may not live here, it is still the, it still is the, the window on the city that they see. So we need to think about how best to make the best of it. We, we have one of the busiest interstates in the entire country running right through our front yard. Is there a way to somehow make Wheat Ridge not, not so much coordinate off, although maybe taller sound walls, from my perspective, taller sound walls along I-70 would be a benefit. But I, I think it's important for us to recognize and acknowledge that there will always be traffic, there will always be cars and there's probably going to be more coming. The, the other thing, and I would very much like to echo and support what Counselor Mayor Potem Stites said, that the infrastructure, the things that keep us afloat are another big thing. And they are something that we have, we cannot ignore and we have to make sure that as we make plans for the future, we make plans to, to prevent things from deteriorating. And probably the best way to put that. I'm going to stop there. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All great, all great thoughts and I appreciate everyone's take. I'm going to build a little bit off of what Counselor Ohm mentioned. And this is, this is a little bit more, I don't know how you, it's going to be more difficult to make it into a concrete thing, but I want to make sure that Wheat Ridge is known as a place that everyone's welcome. I want to make sure that, you know, in going into the future, you know, we're going to see families of all different types and, and I would like those families to live here. And I would like to make sure that there's not a business owner that scrapes money together to open a business and then they receive hateful comments and, and threats. So those are things that, that I, I am more concerned about and also I think are a little bit, I, they're just a little bit more, to, to, to have that built into the city plan is, is challenging, but it's something that I think I would like to see permeating through this process with the committees, with all of our outreach efforts, making sure that we are really truly getting everyone's opinion and, and asking, you know, folks that maybe aren't always ask things about the city, if, if they're renters, they still have valuable opinions and they live here. So I, I would just like to see some more diversity in that we're making sure that we, Wheat Ridge is known as a place that everyone's welcome. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hultein.
Sorry, I'll be quick since I already went once. You know, I really think of Wheat Ridge as a place where, I think we're not just hitting our, like moving from bedroom community to a destination, but like, I think we're a place where people can bring their ideas and try and make them work, whether they're big or small. And so I really like this opportunity for us to reimagine those possible, those possibilities of like, where can we see, like have new fresh eyes on things? Like when I used the word tired on some of our corridors earlier. And what comes to mind is we have a lot of underutilized parking lots, you know, down the street from me on 44th and Zephyr, there's like a used furniture, like a mid-mod furniture store with this like big parking lot. And every time I drive by there, I'm like, oh, I could do a, a shipping container coffee shop in their parking lot. Like, so ways for us to really get innovative with our, our existing assets. So rethinking like parking, but also orienting in the future, you know, we've been talking about transportation tonight. How are we really, you know, drawing, there's a lot of electric vehicles on the road. How are we really being a place where people will come and charge their cars? Like really leveraging the asset of I-70 to create some destinations along our other river of cars? We have a river of water and a river of cars. And so how are we really like recognizing some of those assets? And, and I'd love for us to think really big. I mean, is there some really like big imaginative thing that we could do with the truck stop to really create? we could do with the truck stop to really create like a, you know, a really fun and appropriate destination? We don't want Disneyland, but you know, we, we have a lot of really great potential still in the city that is redevelopment, not raw land. Um, and yeah, so I think that those are just sort of the like reimagining, rethinking parking, how are we drawing like people off the interstate to actually come into our community and experience it? And thinking into the future about what are those uses looking like, like with, with charging and, and to the commutes and traffic. The, the studies are showing in the Denver Metro area, people are making more shorter trips. And when we talk about wanting people to not depend on cars, if we can avoid having to do another investment like Wadsworth, which is really hard on our business, our community does not like it. That's, Scott's in my, my district, it's really, really been rough. It'd be great if we could avoid having to do that again and try and encourage as many of those local trips for people who are willing and able and interested. And increasingly, there's more of them. If they could get there by not having to drive, we would be actually addressing some of our own local traffic. We can't, you know, the pass-through traffic that's regional, we don't have a lot of control over, but there are a lot of local trips that, um, I know my neighbors would like to get to parks and get to 38th Avenue and, and, you know, get around more on bikes if they feel comfortable. So I think that's, that's the kind of thing that if we can do that, I would love to avoid not having to do another project like, like Wadsworth because Wadsworth will look better, but our district's a little bit rough for it. So, thanks.
I think one of the big ideas that we need to do is to recognize that a lot of the people that come to live in Wheat Ridge want to stay here for a long, long time. And, uh, and that we really need to sort of be able to reach out, uh, you know, as Counselor Snell, reach out to all, sort of all parts of our community, uh, and make a, make a place for them in the plan so that they become, they become part of the, part of the planning documents, if you will, and, and have an invested, um, an investment really in their, their future. And, uh, because it's really surprising, you know, I, I came here, you know, and I'm almost 50 years here. And, uh, and people want to come and stay. And many people are, you know, sort of third or more generations here. So that's, uh, worth, uh, worth kind of getting the big ideas right. So that was your first slide. We had a good discussion. You want to roll the slide number two?
All really good things. Um, and I think there are some similar, I think some of these things that were on this list, even if we didn't show them to you, probably would have come out, um, tonight. And a couple of things that I've, I think I've heard, um, multiple times that keep kind of bubbling to the top, corridors is certainly one of them. Um, what that means is yet to be determined. Certainly mobility, um, creating special places. I think, I think that's kind of something that, um, I think people say in different ways and how we frame that is certainly, uh, I think is important. Um, but yeah, I think this, this obviously is not your only bite at the apple. And if there's, there are other things that you think about that, um, you know, as you maul this over, you know, feel free to pass them on to staff and, and make sure we, we get them. I think, um, the discussion about, uh, development and, and what that means, um, as Wheat Ridge continues to grow, where does it continue to grow? How does it continue to grow? Uh, what development goes where? What's the character of that development? Um, all of those things, I think there are trade-offs and implications that at some point, um, we have to kind of dig into and decide what that means, uh, so that way we can make sure that we not only get the big things right, but that we, um, that we, uh, make sure that we, the plan gets in there what we can say yes to. Um, it's easy to say no to things, but what can we actually say yes to?
I want to add something that will be important as we, um, go ahead in, in this process. And, uh, something Counselor Stites said about the implementability of the work that we've done for you in the past. One of the things that we tend to do to help make that happen is we tend to shrink the list of things down. And so there are a, a lot of planning documents, I'm sure you've, many of you have seen them, that have 58 different things that are really important. But the reality is that most communities who have lists of 58 things can't get past number five. And so, uh, Wheat Ridge is a great place, a place that implements, and that's fantastic. But Wheat Ridge also will find that there will be a limit at a certain point to the number of things that kind of go on that list. So if the plan has a number of things in it, as it undoubtedly will, it will also have to have a few things where the, where the plan says, these are really the most important. We can't do anything else. We're going to do these things. And so, um, the conversation tonight that we had was fantastic in terms of generating, some new things that we hadn't heard before, some support for things that are kind of already sitting on a list. Uh, but as we go through this next few months, as we head into the fall, we'll really be thinking about what is, how do we build this hierarchy? What's this prioritization look like? Uh, which things, not all things are equally important, so which things are more important than others? So that'll be part of the work that we're going to have to do is, as we go forward here. Just want to make sure we didn't get out of here without saying that. Great?
In terms of, uh, next steps, uh, we mentioned a couple of times, tomorrow evening, uh, city plan kickoff event with the public, 4:30 to 6:30 at the, at the recreation center. And then also round two of public engagement will be, uh, early June. So we'll take what we've learned from this phase and start, uh, we don't know what that is yet in terms of what that's going to be yet in terms of engagement round two, but that's what we're scheduled to have, uh, early June. We'll be back. I think it's the first week in June, I believe.
Great. Awesome. All right. Well, thank you very much. Great presentation. Great opening.
And I will just add one final note. Um, today we also launched the online version of the activities of, that you'll see at the public meeting tomorrow. Um, so that will be open through early May to make sure that everyone gets a chance to weigh in. So if you want to spread the word for that, um, and if you did not get a T-shirt tonight, don't worry. They'll be at the meeting tomorrow. And if you follow up, if you still haven't gotten it, I have a lot of shirts. So if you send me your size, I will get it to you. Um, and please, on your way out, if you wouldn't mind, I will leave the, um, yard signs. So if you want to grab one of those on your way out, um, I believe there are 10. So if one extra person wants one, or if you want to get two, um, you're welcome to them. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to clarify, is that on What's Up Wheat Ridge or the city website?
It's on What's Up Wheat Ridge. Yeah.
Thank you.
Battery's running low and may not last tonight.
Uh-oh, you better shut her off. Or we could plug it in. Yeah, do you have your cord?
No, I didn't. I'm okay. You know, if it, if it goes out, it goes out. Okay. Well, we will, uh, move past item number two and move to item number three. This is going to be, uh, a discussion about our 2J sales tax extension, project review and updates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we just talked about some of the big things, right? Um, several of you mentioned that we also need to focus on some of our maintenance and, uh, some of those other things. And, um, as you all know, we had a very successful election this last November to extend our temporary sales tax, um, for another 20 years. It was approved by, just to remind you all, almost 70% of our residents. So great support there. We plan to eventually issue bonds, um, in one or more tranches, up to 75 million, possibly this fall when interest rates, um, are projected to draw, to drop. Andrew is here from, uh, Piper Sandler, our bond counsel. So he's here to listen, um, to the conversation this evening. Um, so although 75 million sounds like a lot of money, um, it's only going to go so far. Um, and we do hope to leverage those funds with, uh, other grants and other funding sources as much as possible to, um, get as many projects done as possible. Um, however, we need to prioritize, um, projects based on the ballot language that, that you remember, um, included sidewalk, bike, bike lane and street improvements, filling sidewalk gaps and drainage, um, and floodplain infrastructure. So Maria and her staff have been, um, working on that prioritization process. And, um, we, we want to present where we're at this evening and, and talk about those next steps. Maria?
Thank you so much. And so I do have a slide presentation. Um, but what a great segue to talk about this, uh, first talking about the city plan, that kind of overall arching, how exciting to, um, kind of talk about that what's next in Wheat Ridge. And this just builds off of that. So how often are we as a group given that amount of money to really say, how can we make a difference in the community? And so as we talked internally about this, that's really what it came down to is over the past, probably better part of last five years, we've been talking to the community and getting their input in a variety of ways. And that's really shaped and formed this list, um, before you to help drive those, those priorities that not only invest in our existing infrastructure, take care of what we already have, whether that's from deferred maintenance, um, or just that refresh that we talked about, or was talked about in the previous item, but also then builds those new things the public has already told us that they want. And ultimately to improve access, improve connectivity, and ultimately improve quality of life for all of our citizens. So with that, we'll go through some of those specifics. As, uh, Patrick mentioned, it was those three big themes that came out. So corridors, so not just roadways, but those actual corridors, looking at sidewalks, bikeways, and then drainage. And, um, interestingly enough, a lot of the projects touch in all of those areas. So, which made, made us feel like we were going in the right direction, knowing that we're hitting on all of those themes in, in many cases. So the roadway projects that we've identified, um, that's just the list of them there. I'll go through in a little bit more detail here. But that's shown on a map. So a lot of the, a lot of these are shown in maps and we can provide this, uh, for all of you if you would like. But that just gives a flavor across the board there, looking at investing in some of those very large roadway projects that we've already talked, that 38th West between Youngfield and Kipling. Tabor multimodal, which can also, again, is an example that hits on multiple, uh, of those themes, replacing some of our signals, adding new signals, as well as updating or refreshing 38th Avenue between Harlan and Wadsworth. Just talks about that a little bit more specifically. So we've, um, we're starting this year, we're actually for our pavement management program, we've actually divided the city into six zones. So instead of, uh, what we've done in the past, which is do kind of street here, street there, all across the city, we're going to be focusing in zone one this year in 2024. And then we'll move, uh, sequentially throughout the city over the next continuously, um, to do roadways concentrated within those zones. So we've used this as a template for some of our deferred, um, maintenance projects to say, how do we use this kind of zone concept where we can communicate within that smaller neighborhood or neighborhoods, um, and concentrate those improvements? So you'll see this map kind of come up over and over again in a couple of situations here. So for example, we're recommending that beyond our typical 3 million that we roughly put in every year for pavement maintenance, we need to up that amount. And so in addition to the 3 million that we annually put towards that, we would add 2 million, so roughly 5 million per zone over the next six years to kind of get us back in shape in terms of our roadway maintenance. So that's things like, uh, what we've done in the past, milling overlay, our slurry seal, but also probably doing some reconstruction to build off of our emergency storm sewer repair and the storm sewer repair that we know is going to have to occur, as well as reaching out to our utility partners, Excel, um, the various water and sanitation districts who are doing a lot of underground work as well. I always like to say that the roadways are the icing on the cake. So everything's got to be baked and figured out underneath before we can put that icing on and make that top lift really look, uh, and operate nicely. That was just the two signals that we're talking about. So the 44th and Eldridge one is, was a carryover. Somehow we received that from Jefferson County that has exceeded its, not only exceeded its, um, useful life, but we can no longer find parts to replace that. So it needs a complete replacement of the controller as well as the arms and signal poles. The, and then just to, the new traffic signal at 44th and Tabor, that was a recommendation that came on the 44th Avenue Plan. So, um, they, they did, uh, as kind of a subset of that plan, there was a traffic signal study warrant done, which recommended that that be installed there. That's right at the corner of Heine's and 44th for reference. Also, traffic calming measures. This has become more of an issue, just as we talked about last Monday night. Uh, traffic, speeding, cut through traffic has become a major issue within our community. And so we've also put some, uh, dollars in here to address that in some fashion. These are just photos of some of the existing measures that we put in place, speed humps, the chicane there in the middle, which is down on Teller. And really, as we talked about last week, is perhaps expanding that toolbox to look at different techniques than just using speed humps, um, throughout the community. All right. And then transitioning to sidewalk gaps. So what was interesting, and this is one of the attachments, this kind of colorful document, is we went through staff, uh, public work staff went through and actually took all the photos in this presentation, but also measured all of the segments. Um, it was amazing how many little segments here and there are missing. One house here for whatever reason, a couple of houses on one side of the street, yet the other side has sidewalk. And it's really, um, quite a, quite a conglomeration of, um, segments. So what we've tried to do, I identify here is just a various way that you could, um, mix and match these segments. So I wouldn't say that, I would hope that we got everything here. Um, but there may be little segments here missing and that, but we hope to capture everything. And really, you could slice and dice this in a million different ways. I've taken some measures here to try and break this down to give an idea and a flavor of how we could, um, we set up to prioritize these. And then we'll talk about some of these bigger projects as well. So again, that's, there's that zone map that you see there. We're recommending that we take care of our existing sidewalks. So there's a lot of side streets here or there that aren't on that priority map that we just haven't done a lot. We've done maybe a hundred thousand dollars worth of work, um, repairing sections here and there, mostly by word of mouth or requests that come into the city. And we have not, this is the first year, again, we're going to be focusing on zone one there, which is kind of the southwest corner, where we actually have gone out proactively, looked at every sidewalk in zone one, rated it. If you remember the presentation I did in October, where we had a rating of one through four, and we're, we're going to repair all of the fours in zone one this year. Um, that, we're still putting the dollars together, but I'm anticipating that that'll probably be in that range of four to $600,000 for all of those repairs. But the good part is, is we do this once, we get through the city, hopefully it won't be as bad the next time. But then continuing to go on this zone map and stay ahead of it instead of waiting for, or calls to come to us or people to complain about it. Similarly, we've done maybe a hundred to $200,000 worth of ADA ramp replacement. This is the corners at the, typically at the corners of sidewalks where not only, um, wheelchairs need to access that, but, uh, other people with various handicaps, you know, who cannot maybe take that step up off the curb, maybe bicyclists prefer to be on there, especially children on bikes. But, um, and it is a federal requirement as well. And again, kind of focusing on that as a zone by zone aspect to try and address that. Tabor Street, this is just an aerial view of those Tabor Street multimodal improvements. We were able to put it together, or we received a tip grant, but that was only for the design and some of the environmental work. So what this aerial shows is that we're crossing, Tabor, as you know, crosses I-70. And it's pretty much two lanes. And so in order to get multimodal improvements, whether it's bike lanes and/or sidewalk across I-70 is going to be very expensive. So that tip grant did not include anything for construction. So that tip grant did not include anything for construction. So this is one of the projects that we'll be very aggressively looking at grant opportunities for, but otherwise, the cost is quite high because of those construction costs to cross I-70, as well as along the rest of Tabor down to 44th. You know, it's a very narrow right-of-way, there's already structures built pretty much up to the right-of-way line, so we know it will be quite expensive to do that. All right, so we'll get into some of the gaps now, and I will provide these maps. We're doing a compilation map, so you can see all of the segments in one place, but we've broken this out just by, again, some different priorities that we identified. These are the priority sidewalk gaps, and that was based on, this was a map that was prepared, this is one of your attachments as well. This was done back in 2018, so these darker reddish-brown lines show the priority streets within the city, and they identified missing segments. So we cross-checked the list against that to identify these as those priority sidewalk gaps, and they're just circled in blue there to kind of bring your eye to those locations. That totals just over three miles. And then here's some examples, this is from Youngfield, actually, as you travel, this would be the east side of Youngfield, as you travel just north of 38th Avenue, you can see there that there's usually a reason why these sidewalks haven't been built. There's a lot of physical issues. So here, you know, we see right up in the upper left-hand corner, there's a person with their dog, they're obviously using this area, but we've got guardrail with a retaining wall behind it, there's actually a drainage way, or I believe it's a ditch that travels underneath the roadway right at that location. Utility poles, missing curbs, you know, that white little thing there, that's some sort of other utility most likely that's underground. So we've got a lot of issues, and therefore the costs are going to be higher than just, oh, let's go put in a sidewalk tomorrow. Lots of things to consider. These are some of those small gaps, I would say, all of them, you know, it's 60 feet here and there. So making those connections could be, make a really big deal for somebody who's, again, trying to make that connection to the store, who doesn't want to walk in the dirt, who doesn't want to walk in the snow potentially, and have a smooth, safe place to walk. These were three citizen requests that we've collected over the past several years. We had started, and you're probably most familiar with the one on 52nd Avenue, east of Tabor to the border with Arvada. We had started design on that and then kind of put that on hold to have this discussion, if there's interest in pursuing that. Some of the immediate neighbors weren't necessarily in favor of that, but there was general support for that from the greater neighborhood. Another segment, just as an example down there, and I've got photos of that, is 26th Avenue, west of the Gold Marketplace. So after you get past Golds, that project or that photo on the left shows it best, you're basically traveling, you know, along the edge of the asphalt there, and there's a variety of vegetation, signs, logs, I guess, that are in your way. And that is a relatively busy street. There is a bike lane there, so you're actually walking in the bike lane if you chose to walk in that location. Kipling gaps, this was another high priority that was identified back in 2018. Now, Kipling, as you know, is a CDOT road, but we've taken the initiative to start that and fill in those gaps basically between 44th and all the way down to 26th, where there's some smaller gaps down there. The recent development at the north, roughly the northwest corner of 32nd and Kipling, did quite a bit of that along the west side of Kipling, down to about, roughly, I think it was about 41st or so, 40, yeah, maybe 43rd, but we still have some gaps on the west side that would be constructed, as well as along just north of the rec center as well, and where it connects to Clear Creek. So in total, those three segments add up to about 4/10 of a mile, and again, just a very challenging environment. So these are, those photos here show Kipling just north of that new development called the Hilltop. You know, we've got grades, again, power poles, we've got, oops, excuse me, just different things going on in the right-of-way, you can probably see, there's probably some limited right-of-way, but again, as that center photo, top one shows, there's still people that walk there. So where you see those worn paths, obviously, this is a place where people want to be. And that upper left-hand corner might be able to see, but the sidewalk just basically ends and you're back in dirt. Collectors. So this is primarily along, down in the southeast portion of the city, and that's along both 29th as well as Pierce and then Harlan. Lots of gaps along Pierce. If you've ever biked along there, driven along there, you can see that really is, it's like one side of the street has it, and for some reason, the homes across don't. So we would pick up basically all of that so that we have continuous sidewalk between 29th and 38th, or excuse me, 44th, because I believe north of there on Pierce is already built, so just outside of the circle there. That represents about just under 9/10 of a mile, and there's some photos of segments along Pierce Street. Again, just you're either walking in the bike lane if you choose to walk there, or you're off in the dirt, and really, as the photo on the left hand shows, you know, where there is sidewalk, it just kind of ends and can become a tripping hazard, especially if you imagine if you're in the dark, you're just stepping off into a no-man's land. Safe Routes to Parks, this is an initiative that's recently, we've got a very small grant, but a mighty one, and a very active citizens group who's participated in a few meetings now to talk about this, and one of the projects that they've identified is Miller Street, which is adjacent to the Fruitdale Park on the, kind of the upper or northern edge of Miller Street, just south of, on the east side, just south of the Frontage Road there. And there's missing sidewalks again there. The group identified also some traffic calming measures along Miller, as well as improved crossings that might help that neighborhood get to Fruitdale Park, as well as get down to 44th and up to the regional trail as well. One of the other projects that they've identified, and it'll come up here in a future slide, is down at 32nd Avenue. So again, kind of focusing on this area between the high school, which is at Holland, just to the west of Holland, right in this location, and we're recommending going from where that existing pedestrian crossing is, where the RFB is, and right now, you can walk in Crown Hill Park, there's a trail, but again, I don't think I have a photo, but there's a beaten path just behind the curb. So let's build the sidewalk where people are already walking, and build the sidewalk, or maybe I do have a photo of that, no, that's 35th. So building a sidewalk on the south side of 32nd, along that kind of curve through there, and where it connects at about, roughly about Estes, it gets into that trail, which is kind of separated on the south side of the roadway. At the same time, what we're recommending, and why this goes beyond the sidewalk, is to widen the roadway just enough that it be the eastern bike lane is too narrow. It has to be a minimum of four feet wide. It's probably less than two feet in some places, the asphalt is breaking off, and we would widen it just enough to not widen the lanes, we'd actually look at some traffic calming measures through here as well, as well as improved crossings, to get people from the north down to that sidewalk on the south, but also look at making that bike lane wide enough and not giving up room, you know, with the lanes in order, or widening the lanes in order to provide for that, those bike lanes. Instead, we'd widen out the asphalt all the way, excuse me, all the way down to probably almost to Wad's, and where that grassy area is now, create kind of a natural swale through there, and give that buffer between the trail and the bike lane. Some other 2J projects, again, we're, you know, this is where that crossover is, we've already talked about, and the corridors, you know, doing Youngfield, or excuse me, 38th West between Youngfield and Kipling, and now this is showing up just as another 2J project, because this came up as a hyper for sidewalks along there as well. Similarly, along 38th, looking at, you know, improvements there adjacent to the green, kind of doing that refresh, and as we heard from one of our public speakers even tonight, looking at bike and pet improvements in that segment as well. And then again, it just touches on Tabor, which is, we already talked about that. This is 35th Avenue, oh, excuse me, this shows 35th Avenue. We also got a grant for design and some environmental for that work, but again, no money for construction. So I put that in both Tabor, you know, the Tabor construction costs and the construction costs associated with the 35th Avenue project as elements within this plan. And this just, again, shows some of those challenges along 35th Avenue. We have the existing sidewalk that just kind of ends, fences right up to the right-of-way, kind of this, that Hollywood curb, you know, where you've got the sloping, kind of too narrow sidewalk in many places. And then here it just shows that wetness, so even if you are walking or feel comfortable, you're walking oftentimes through some not-so-good areas. Altogether, though, that other 2J projects adds up to more than five miles of additional sidewalk. Oops. All right, the one funded city project is, excuse me, gotta let the clicker keep up with me. That's the Wadsworth Path that we already have funding for, including construction between 35th and 32nd Avenue on the west side. We're getting a consultant on board now to design that, so we hope to build that probably in 2026 at this point. So that project is completely funded. And then these were other CDOT roads where we've identified some sidewalk gaps. So Ward Road wasn't on the high priority list back in 2018. Fortunate for us, CDOT is in the process of designing those missing segments right now, all the way between 44th to 52nd. There's gaps on both the east side and the west side, and a big impediment has been removed now that they're doing the bridge project over I-70. They've now moved those walls back underneath to allow for sidewalk on either side. So they're in the midst of design right now, and we hoped that they'll build that probably in 2025 or 2026 and fill gaps on both sides, including over the railroad tracks. So if you've ever tried to walk across railroad tracks, it's not fun, and this would provide ADA-accessible grade sidewalk across each of those on both sides of Ward. There's still a little gap here at the north end, which we, on Kipling, which we did not include because of the potential for future development right up there, hoping that they'll, somebody would come in and build that. That's also what's going to occur, this project or site is already planned for development, so the east side of Kipling, between roughly 44th and 48th is missing sidewalk, but that is currently in the plans for this development, and they will build that. We still have some missing sidewalk along Wadsworth, both on the east side, north of 32nd, as well as from 29th on the west side down to 26th. And then finally, a couple of blocks over here on Sheridan on the west side, where there's basically parking lot with some apartment buildings in front. So right now, none of these segments that I talked about, other than the Kipling ones, are in our plan, but these could be added potentially too if there was a desire. And then finally, drainage projects. So as you all know, our stormwater master plan has just recently kicked off, so a big caveat to this is that we are still unsure about exactly what that project list and what the priorities will be. Instead, what we've done is preliminarily looked at all of the information from Mile High Flood District, as well as what is in the, already in the existing stormwater master plan, and some of the anticipated projects that we see coming out of that, and then potentially, or for sure, identifying, as we've experienced again, just within the last couple of weeks here, another failure at 32nd and Miller of our storm sewer system is putting in enough to get us over, excuse me, to address some of these emergency storm sewer repairs until such time as we can kind of catch up with all of that deferred maintenance. So this just shows some of those improvement projects, again, here primarily along Clear Creek. This big circle is that Denver Water Augmentation Plan site, if you're familiar with that area. We hope to be able to either purchase that from Denver Water, or perhaps receive that from them in some way, where we could make that into detention versus what they use it for now, which is, again, augmentation for their treatment plant or overflow. And they're currently building another treatment or another plant further north, up north of Golden, and so it's hopeful that, once that plant is completed later in 2024, that this land could become available for something here. These are the improvements that would need to occur to take the Clearveil neighborhood out of the floodplain, there's also homes in the floodway here. And then these are the two reaches that are part of the Sloans Lake Major Development, Master Development Plan, Master, excuse me, Master Drainage Plan that was created a few years ago, and there are also homes on both of these reaches that are also within the This is off of the Mile High Flood District, it's kind of hard to see, but all of these red dots represent structures that are within either the floodway or the floodplain. This flood hazard area map was updated in 2018, and so they've identified this, again, all of those homes cannot have improvements done to them, they're kind of in this limbo until such time as we can remove them from the floodplain or their floodway, and so this becomes a high priority because of that. And these are just some photos, this is the drop structure that you talked, that we've talked about replacing, and then this is a photo of that pedestrian bridge off in the Okay, so putting all those together, we were very conservative, because again, none of these have really been designed to a great extent, so we've been fairly conservative with our estimates. This would include not only construction, but design as well, and you can see that between the three major themes, they total over $234 million. So quite significant, and a big portion of that being the drainage and floodplain. So with that, obviously, as Patrick's mentioned, we only have $75 million approximately, and as much as we want to leverage grants, I don't know that we can leverage it at a three-to-one ratio. So what we instead are recommending as staff is to look at minimal amounts of investment in the drainage and floodplain, just for those kind of emergency repairs to get us through until we can, again, kind of catch up with things. And then keeping the corridors and sidewalks and bikeways at the same amounts as in that previous slide, which again, still totals more than what we anticipate, or what we have available, but we also have the opportunity to go after grants in both of these categories more aggressively and really focus on those, so that we can leverage our funds with those from both federal and state, hopefully. So with that, our last slide there is we anticipate building this out over a five-to-six-year timeframe, so beginning those efforts, as Patrick mentioned, likely doing bond issuance sometime this fall, subject to market conditions, and then really aggressively moving forward with some grants, and then beginning construction as soon as 2025, as we start that work on the pavement management, as well as the sidewalk repairs, and potentially some of those sidewalk gaps as well. So with that, happy to answer any questions and open it up for discussion, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, nice presentation. Councilor Oma.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Maria. Two questions I have are partnering, like on Tabor, as that crosses over I-70, is there any opportunity to get some type of federal grants, because that's above and beyond just a local road?
Potentially, since it's our road crossing a CDOT freeway or an interstate freeway, there may be that, but that's again, what we'll have to explore. They're probably less concerned about having our traffic cross them as much as just making sure theirs goes through, but we can certainly, we'll certainly look into that as much as possible.
And then on the 32nd, where it has the, you know, you talked about the bike lanes and a little bump out, I've ridden that many, many times. and a little, little bump out. I've ridden that many, many times. What I've noticed is that a couple of things. One, vehicles sometimes will park their cars on that bike lane, which there's no, there's no curb right there. And so that edge just keeps getting kind of worn down. The other thing is that there's a certain portion of there that Patrick's aware of that is it's owned by Jeffco with the Crown Hill there. And it constantly just gets battered with people wanting to park. And if we could partner with Jeffco, I'd love to see that just all paved. There's a lot of people that park in that area and maybe that would help also shore up that bike lane.
Yeah, I think defining the parking along there, adding as, probably as basic as it sounds, but adding some no parking signage in certain places would certainly help that.
Thank you.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. So these improvement zones right here, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, so that those are just the zones, that's not necessarily the order in which they're prioritized correctly.
They are. That, and the way we did that, that is the priority. We looked kind of at the worst first. So just on a qualitative assessment, we are in the process of doing a quantitative assessment of all of our pavements as well. But just from a qualitative assessment, from pavements alone, that was the priority given.
So this is the priority list?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so it's not just the zones?
Yeah.
Little, little frustrated at District 4 being 5 and 6. And with the floodplain and drainage, did that, did you recommend a decrease in those projects because you're planning on implementing the storm and drainage fee?
That's correct, yeah. So there'd be some alternate funding source that we need to identify, given the dollar amounts for the drainage at this time.
Okay. And so do you see more grant opportunities with like the bike or the corridors and as opposed to drainage? And because I mean, to me, like shovel ready and ARPA funds were, seem to be prioritizing storm and drainage projects, but is that not the case now?
We'll certainly go after grants for the drainage as well, I think. I think just currently, given the IIJA money, there's, I would say, more available for bike and ped at this time and roadway improvements than there are necessarily for drainage. That would be my opinion.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question on this, on the document, the three sections that were citizen requested, Ammon Street, 26th Avenue, and 52nd, were those through, was that through the NTMP? Or how did the?
No, they were just emails that came in. As I mentioned, that first piece up in the upper corner there, 52nd, as we were developing the project up there along 52nd and Tabor, I believe the neighbors talked about that, or the greater area came out at some public meetings. The piece just south of 44th at Ammons is a pretty difficult segment where it, I think there is sidewalk there now and on both sides. As you approach 44th, it just kind of, there's a retaining wall on one side and almost nothing on the other. And then the third one was an email that was received by me from a concerned citizen asking for sidewalk over there.
Okay. Got it. Thank you so much.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. This looks like it was an extraordinary amount of work. It was a lot of work just reading it. So thanks for, thanks for putting it all together. I have a couple of questions, but before I get into those, I think, you know, the, the vision behind 2J, you know, that our, our existing sunsetting sales tax was really for catalytic projects. And I think 2J, what's exciting is that there is an investment, like at the end of every block, you know, at the end of your street, there'll be some sort of investment or improvement that is in your neighborhood. So I really appreciate seeing sort of how that shows up and translates. I, I guess the couple of things I'm thinking about, you know, I think people still want to see some catalytic improvements, like they, they want to see, and so the 38th Avenue west of Kipling is just, I think, a really important project for us to, to get, to get moving. 35th Avenue is another one that has been, back when I was just a wee bitty bike advocate, we came in and, and council at that point actually committed to getting that done. And that was like eight years ago. So, so I think there's some, some projects that have been, you know, bandied about for a while that, that this really should be moving forward. I want to be a little bit cautious about how much like new sidewalk investments we do within neighborhoods, because new sidewalks are so needed throughout the city that I think we could get ourselves in a situation of like, why are they getting sidewalks and we're not? And I think as long as we've got these, these priorities that, priority gaps on like our collectors and our arterials that have not been completed, I'd be really hesitant to invest like within neighborhoods unless it's like a really direct like school connection. Because otherwise, we're just going to have a lot of people who are like, well, why did that person get a sidewalk? And, you know, my neighborhood has one of those blocks that it's like every other block has a sidewalk, or other, every other house. And then as we're talking about things like 32nd and making that improvement, as someone who rides that when I come to council, tonight's the first night I've driven to council in well over a year. So, but like, you can't actually get from the road up to the multi-use trail. There's very few connections. So as we look at those improvements, like, like not just what is the through piece, but the connecting piece. And then one other comment, and then I have a helpful suggestion around funding. I think one of the, the things that I heard a lot, both, you know, when I was walking on behalf of Councilmember Larson and when we were working on 2J, is people want more crossings on 44th between Kipling and Tabor. And so, and not the rapid flashing beacons. I'm actually really not a fan of those on four lane highways. I think they're actually dangerous. In that context, did you take a look at any other type of signalized crossing? Because 44th Avenue is a long stretch without a safe crossing. So I'm sort of curious if that, because I didn't see that on the list, other than that Tabor, but that's, I mean, there's a light, like a block to the west.
Yeah, I think, you know, we can certainly look at that as well. That was a recommendation that came out of the 44th Avenue Plan. And yeah, I know on four lane or multi-lane roads, RFBs are difficult because you have to presume or wait for all, all lanes to stop. And it's difficult sometimes to see that. So potentially a hawk signal, I think, was recommended in, in the 44th Avenue Plan. But we could certainly take a look at that and consider that for addition.
Okay, that would be great. And I, and I sort of feel like, I mean, I know that the, the crossing signal up in the northwest corner, the, the county kind of said, you guys need to do this.
44th and Eldridge, yeah.
Yeah. In spirit, it doesn't feel like it kind of is part of what we promised people with 2J. So I don't know if that's included in your bundle, but I would rather see crossings invested on 44th. And then I can, I'd be happy to meet with you, Maria, separately from this. But when I was in DC a month ago, I met with the USDOT and got a lot of really good information on their TFIAs loans, which is a way that we could leverage these funds, especially for that Tabor project. It has to, a, a piece of it has to be within a half mile. And it turns out that the rail station there is not a light rail, but it's rather a commuter rail, which is a special designation. It's just, it's on the heavier rail. So it's actually eligible for lower, lower interest rates financing.
Oh, great.
And then also, I think many of you probably saw this, but Golden just got like a $23 million drainage grant through CDOT. So there, there are drainage grants that are still floating out there, both through the IGA and, and the IRA. So, but those are just my thoughts. And just, it's exciting to see this. And one more thing, with those districts that you've broken the neighborhoods up into, you know, I think it is good neighborhoods want to see some literal investment, like on their, on their blocks. But when Kelly Blinn was speaking at the beginning, I mean, really looking at the resurfacing, we have a lot of like really easy opportunities to create, you know, like the white lines, to stripe a safe side of the road for people to be walking on in neighborhoods. Like how are we really leveraging our striping for really like, like low cost improvements in the neighborhoods? So if we're going to be doing that, converting some of this to surface improvements, like how are we really using those improvements to improve that safety in the neighborhoods? But thanks for all the work on this. It's, it's a bunch.
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And looking at the, this priority sheet, it, it really helps you, it helps anybody appreciate the extent of what we're looking at here. There are a lot of projects here. My question is, under, on the right side, under notes, you've got, whether it's a priority, request, a collector, or future development. How, how does that shake out? Is a collector something that is not priority or, or more priority than future development? How does that get ranked?
Sure, yeah. So I, again, I took the 2018 update to our project or to the bike ped plan. And that was how we created the bike ped priorities. But then collectors were also, you know, as a higher volume of traffic on them, that we recommended that we fill in the sidewalks on collectors just because of the higher volumes of traffic. So that was how these received those categories, basically. And then similarly, like future development, we're hoping, again, to leverage our private partners to hopefully build those segments so that we don't have to use city resources for those. Did that address your question?
Yeah, mostly. So a, a future development or a future project is not something that would be looked at within the next year or two, or?
Yeah, the, the future projects are a little bit of a difficult category. So some of these are longer segments. So for example, the recommendation was to build a sidewalk all the way from essentially 44th and Youngfield, all the way to the 44th and Eldridge. So it's over a mile long. I think it's listed here as about 4,400 feet. It was a priority, but yet 4,400 feet is going to be probably in the range, it's just under, you know, probably what, eight tenths of a mile. It's going to take up a significant amount of resources. So some of those longer segments, or where we had something on the other side of the street, or in the case of like Dudley and Dover, we need to do more work to really dig into that and see is that, maybe we need to put our dollars elsewhere. But again, some of those, what I've identified or we've identified as future projects could be moved around if we heard back from council on that.
Okay. Well, that makes sense then. Obviously, the longer the project is, the more expensive it would be. And then I suppose, once you surveyed, and you can see that there's going to be possibly some right of way issues or whatever, that would also add to the cost as well. On the, the next page, or the page after that, where we get down to CDOT owned, and you've, again, you've got the ones that are, Ward Road, for example, is underdesigned by CDOT, and you discussed that. But you have some other ones, some collector streets, some odd categories like adjacent to the cemetery. I mean, does this mean that they're, they're being recognized, but they're not something that we're looking at as a project?
Correct. The pink one there, which is the I-70 frontage road, we've added that since it is listed as a collector street. So that is included in our recommended list of projects. But some of the other ones, like the Wadsworth Boulevard ones, are not at this time. Similarly, and, and so again, if the feedback is that we should prioritize Wadsworth over perhaps some of these other smaller volume roads, we could certainly look at moving those around. But at this time, yeah, there's still segments on Wadsworth that are not being built. And then those two on future development under Kipling, and then along Sheridan, which we're hoping, you know, as development occurs, that those would be built.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Putem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it real quick. I really appreciate what you've done here, being able to reduce the, the list down. And I think prioritizing to where you can maximize the bang for the buck, I think makes, makes the most sense to what you've done here. I know specifically, in District 3, that little star you have at the bottom, that one on 26th, especially after Vivian closed and all those students are now going to Stover, that becomes more of a priority for the students. And I know some of the other side of that street is Lakewood, but it runs on our side where that's, that's one of the ways that those kids from Vivian get to Stover. So I understand why that might be a priority and why that, those citizens, I think they reached out to Counselor Weaver and I as well. I, I agree with Counselor Hulteen that, you know, where it's good to see the sidewalk repairs in the neighborhoods. I think the, the building of new sidewalks, as much as we can focus on the, the corridors, the collection streets, the big ones, to get people to where they need to go is, is probably the priority. I've already seen in Zone 1, where I happen to live, you know, down the block, they're already fixing some of those, those, those issues where it's heaved and all that stuff, where it makes it incredibly difficult to even just walk down the sidewalk because you're tripping and you certainly can't ride a bike on it. So I, I'll, like I said, I'll keep it short, but I really appreciate what you're doing here. And it makes a lot of sense. So thank you.
Counselor Weaver.
Thank you. I also just wanted to mention, are you asking us for anything tonight?
No, I think just concurrence that we're going in the right direction.
Okay.
And if there are particular segments that for some reason are not shown.
Sure.
You would like those moved onto the to-do list.
I think this is great. I, and I just want to let council know, and you may know this, but I, I also have a student group that we'll be presenting in a couple of weeks regarding some of the, the demographic attributes of all of our districts. So you can also get to some of those, those questions around access to transportation and, and that will be additional for how this affects districts.
Any additional discussion on this item?
And we'll obviously bring back more information as we proceed. And when we look closer to bonds and kind of more detailed project list as we, as we move along. So this won't be your, your last look at it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Maybe we should go invest in the concrete plant. All right, we're going to wrap this up here pretty quick, I hope. Mr. Goff, staff reports.
Yeah, I'll pass this evening, nothing else.
You can.
You want to keep it short. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Nothing else. Okay. Well, well, someone else is going to step into your place. So, you know, so, okay. Elected officials matters. Raise your hand if you have one. Counselor Hulteen.
Happiness Gardens report. I was there the other day and the Wheat Ridge High School class that Counselor Ohm taught at a couple of weeks ago, they were there working at Happiness Gardens. And it was mostly graduating seniors and I got to talk to them a little bit. And I asked them, you know, what's, what's changed for them after having a chance to work in the community like this? And they were saying that they realized that everything that they see is something that somebody designed and worked on and that they, you know, have started to see more how they impact their community. So again, we're just doing great partnerships and Happiness Gardens is a great place to have those partnerships. So it was fun seeing the high school students there and they were doing hard work. And I really appreciated that. And so.
Good. Additional elected officials matters. Counselor Snell.
Two quick things. This past Saturday, I got to participate in a adult art class with, through Sweet Ridge Studios. And I just want to recommend it to everyone. Melinda and her team do an amazing job. And they historically have done so much for camps for kiddos with, you know, with art. And now she started these, these date nights for, for anyone who'd like to go who's not considered a kid. But kid, yeah. And so that was great. So she's doing those every month. So go to her website and look, and there's a different project every month. Super fun. And just, it's always nice to connect with your creativity again. And then this Saturday, it's, it's inches from Wheat Ridge. It's in Arvada now, but Habitat for Humanity has a Restor, and they're having a big Earth Day celebration and sale. That store used to be in Wheat Ridge and they moved up the hill about 20 feet. And it's in Arvada now. So, but it's still going to be great. And they always have really good deals if you're doing any sort of home projects or anything. So those are my two things. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. At, at our last meeting, we were kind of pressed for time. I wasn't really able to express my thanks for all of the folks who showed up at the District 4 meeting. That was back in the beginning of the month. District 4 meeting, that was back in the beginning of the month. I made a videotape of that session, and it is now posted on Channel 8, and it can be found on YouTube. So if you're interested in learning a little bit more about some of the things going on in District 4, please go ahead and look that up. And then the other thing is that my neighbors are still talking about the power outage, and even though, as soon as the power and as soon as the lights come back on, people tend to forget about it until the next one. But I would remind residents that have power lines going through their backyards to have a look, to look and see if that beautiful tree that you like so much and you watch it grow is actually impinging on the power line. And if that tree comes down, it takes the electricity down for you and your neighbors, and they're going to be mad at you. So have a look. If you need to get the tree trimmed, please do it. But don't wait for the next storm to take the tree down, when it should be taken down before then. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further matters by elected officials?
If not, I wasn't sure if Leah or Cory were going to announce. We did have interviews today for Presiding Judge. We will be coming to City Council on May 20th with some candidates, so stay tuned.
We will be back here next week at 6:30 for a regular meeting. So until then, if there's no more business to come before us, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.